Good evening. Tonight's a little bit different. We have a tax rate hearing really fast before our normal board meeting at 6:30. So we're gonna work through that. So I appreciate all of you being here. We are going to get started. If I could please call the September 25th, 2025 Melville School District Tax Rate Hearing to Order. If we could please all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Now I would like to do roll calls. Tori Belkey, here. Peggy Hassler, that's me. Patrick McKelvey is stuck on 270, but he will be here. Jean Preto. Serene Wilkinson. Jeff Woolman.
Here.
And Ann Zimfer.
Here.
Okay. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Open period for patron comments regarding the tax rate. We have no one signed up. Thank you. Next is fiscal responsibility. Marshall Crutcher, our CFO, will be talking.
Good evening. I'm Marshall Crutcher, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm presenting the tax rates. So if you've read the agenda write-up and looked over the schedules, the summary of what we're doing is the revenue is increasing about $2 million. And all of that increase is targeted to go to the capital fund allocation. The assessed values have increased 12.1% from last year. That's compared to CPI inflation of 2.9%. So the assessed values went up quite a bit more than inflation. Because of the Hancock Amendment and that differential with AV going up quite a bit more than inflation pushes the rates down. So you'll note that our blended rate is now about $3.70 compared to last year, $4. And, you know, people can get a little confused. We didn't do anything to change the tax rate. We had no ballots. We had, we had nothing. This is just an automatic adjustment of state auditor tax rate schedules. It pushes the rate down, and that's how the Hancock Amendment works. In summary, on, you know, on the tax rates and the revenue, basically about one cent will generate about $280,000 of revenue this next year or this current year. Collection is based on 96.87%. We budgeted 96.72%. That sounds pretty close. It's just that little differential of 15 one-hundredths of a percent added another $150,000 to the revenue budget. And that's based on the actual prior year percentage that came in at 96.85%. The impact on Prop A, on these tax rates, is that Prop A last year was 3.26 cents, and now, just like the regular rate going down, this rate went down too. It goes down to 2.99 cents. So the ballot that's on November will really be the combination of the current rate now of 2.99 cents plus the 2.4 cents coming from debt service. So that's now 5.39 cents. And the final point is, you know, we've talked about tax freezes for over a year, and we don't have any data yet from the county and probably won't until November at the earliest. So the residential tax levy increased, and I'm taking about 30% of that increase, which is a million dollars, and that's how much I'm backing off the revenue. So I'm just making a wild estimate that we're going to freeze 30%. So if the actual freeze is more than 30%, we'll have a little less revenue, and if it's less than 30%, we'll have more revenue. So that's still a budget variable out there that's unknown. So that really sums up the key points of this year's tax rate calculation. Are there any questions?
If I could please get a motion to set the tax rates for fiscal year '26 by adopting the following resolution. It is resolved that the Melville School District, in consideration of the educational opportunities and expenses for the students, the maintenance and care of facilities and operational needs of the school district will set the tax rate ceilings at the most current approved state auditor's rate as presented. And those numbers are on e-boards for the public to see. So if I could please get a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Okay. Thank you, Marshall. If I could please get a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to the Melville School District Board of Education, September 25th, 2025 School Board Meeting. If I could please call this meeting to order, and everyone stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to welcome all of you and thank you for coming tonight. And now I want to do roll calls. So Tori Belkey.
Here.
I'm Peggy Hassler. Patrick McKelvey.
Present.
Jean Preto.
Here.
Serene Wilkinson.
Here.
Jeff Woolman.
Here.
And Ann Zimfer.
Here.
If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Now we are moving to communications. The superintendent update, Dr. Jeff Hogg.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education. My name's Jeff Hogg. I'm the superintendent of schools, and I would like to welcome everyone here this evening. We started this tradition last year of going through and just kind of showcasing all the amazing things we're doing in our district. This is one of the more exciting board meetings because we finally have kids and families and parents back. The summer gets a little boring, so I'm gonna jump right in here. We'd like to congratulate our Oakville High School First Robotics Team. They were named state finalists for the 2025 season after impressive performance competing against 30 other schools. They will host an event coming up in early October where probably 20 or 30 different schools from around the county, around the state come and participate in the gym. It's an amazing event, so congratulations to them. Congratulations to Amy Bush, James Madison Fellowship. She is a social studies teacher at Melville High School and received this graduate fellowship. It's an honor of $24,000. It's a very impressive honor to win. And then Promising Practice, I'd go on about this, but Dr. Keno is gonna talk a little bit about it in his presentation, and he asked for me not to steal his thunder. Oakville High School, congratulations to them. They were named National School of Character. It's just one of 71 schools across the country that is a, or, and it's the only high school in Missouri. That's an incredible recognition, so congratulations to them. And then our twirling national champions, the Oakville High School Tiger Twirlers, won first place at the high school halftime category. Twirling champions, that didn't stop there. They won several others through, several other competitions throughout, and then, not to be outdone, our Melville High School Majorettes won first place in the high school dance twirl at the nationals, at Nationals as well. So those are two amazing groups, and if you ever get to see them at halftime of the football games, they do not disappoint. Garage Star, congratulations to Joe Houston, lead mechanic. He was recognized by the school transportation news. That is the publication for the trades, for the transportation in every school district across the country. So that is a really impressive honor, and he does an amazing job. And then, again, first day of school, just the smiling faces. We made it to every school that day, had several people out and around. Our communications department did an amazing job, and these were just some of the few smiling faces. Our first day was amazing, and the year has been off to a wonderful start. And then we're honoring our heroes in the community. Thank you to Blades and thank you to Bernard. Blades had an amazing, just September 11th ceremony, and then Bernard welcomes all of our local first responders to a barbecue. And it's amazing because you get to watch kids serve and interact with our community members. And then we've had three strategic planning meetings so far. We have two left. There'll be an update about this a little bit later with the two remaining facilities and community involvement. So thank you to our community. We've had great turnout the first three nights. We expect that to continue. We're also doing Facility Steering Committee, and we have three more meetings for that. We really want community input on where they want our district to go facility-wise and academics. And then again, this will pick up as we go. This was just the first one, school just started, but again, we're off to a great start. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Awesome, awesome things happening in our schools that we just really love hearing about and appreciate all of you guys for everything you do. Next up is our student advisors to the board reports. So our student advisors, each year, two children, two kids, one from each high school, are chosen by their, the administrators at their school. It's part of our board policy, JFBB, and the board recognizes the unique perspective held by students on issues impacting the school district. Therefore, we ask that we have a student from each school attend most of our meetings to give us an update on what's happening in their schools. So I would like to introduce, for Oakville, Valdana Korkerik, and for Melville, Elliot Parai. So Valdana, do you want to go first?
Yep. Good evening, everyone. So there's always a certain energy that comes with starting fresh, and you can definitely feel that at Oakville right now. Students are back into routines, meeting new teachers, and reconnecting with their friends. Our freshmen especially are adjusting to high school life and beginning to find their place, which has been very exciting to watch. This fall, we've also had several colleges visit and set up stands for students to explore. It's been a valuable opportunity for juniors and seniors to start thinking about the next steps and to ask questions directly from the schools that they're interested in. I also want to take a moment to highlight our OHS marching band. The Marching Tigers performed at the Jaguar Pride Invitational at Sekman High School, and they swept all captions, winning outstanding color guard, outstanding percussion, outstanding visual, and outstanding music. It's a huge accomplishment for them, and I'm very proud. Looking ahead, we're excited to host Trick or Treat Thursday on October 23rd from 5:30 to 7:00 in Gym B at Oakville High School. It's always a fun event that brings the community together, and students are already preparing to make it a great experience for families and kids, so I hope to see you all there. And since this is my last meeting as a student representative, I just wanted to quickly say how grateful I've been for the opportunity to share Oakville's story at these meetings. It's been an honor to represent my school, and I really valued being able to give our students a voice here. Thank you all for being here tonight, and I will now pass it on to my friend Elliot.
That was fantastic, Valdana, and thank you. Good evening. I'd like to mention some things at Melville. School has been back in session for about a month, and we've been glad to celebrate 100 years of Melville High School. Happy birthday. Melville Student Council is proud to present our new theme, "I'm Going." This involves STUCO members attending various games and events to show our support. The goal is to promote connections between groups and to build a school-wide community. Melville STUCO recently completed its first blood drive of the year, supporting the Red Cross. Melville High School is in the process of instituting a new club, Model United Nations, through which students will advocate for global issues in simulated competitions. Melville is celebrating homecoming this weekend with the traditional parade, football game, and dance themed around High School Musical. Melville just celebrated our annual Powderpuff Game and a junior victory over the seniors. Go juniors! And I'd like to say this is my last meeting as student advisor to the board, and I want to thank everyone for this privilege and opportunity, and I'm glad to have served with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. Thank you, you guys. So as they both just told you, this is their last meeting, so on behalf of the Board of Education, I wanted to thank both of you for participating, and I want you to know that your leadership and your insight and your willingness to share the student perspectives have been invaluable to the board, and we really appreciate it. So you've not only represented your peers with thoughtfulness and maturity, but also modeled what it means to be a true leader among your classmates. We are very grateful for your service and the voice you've given the students across the district, and we would like to present you both with a certificate of appreciation as a token of our gratitude. So, and then we want to get your picture.
I'd like to add one thing. As soon as you guys graduate from college, come back and run for the school board.
Just like Patrick. All right, we're gonna do a group picture. Good plug, Jean.
Elliot, I just want to say you finally wore pants to a board meeting. I'm so proud of you. Last one, best one. I'd like to thank you. You're so proud of yourself. You're so proud of yourself. It's to wish you a good day.
Oh, sure, sure.
Some hats are already swatted on. Jeff, move around, just for me. And one, two, three. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are amazing. Now what everybody's been waiting for. We want to recognize our staff, students, and community volunteers. So first up will be Mosaic Dr. Scott Clark.
Good evening, Board. My name is Scott Clark. I'm the principal at Mosaic Elementary School, and tonight we're gonna be recognizing fifth grade student Stella Hawley. To do the recognition, I'd like to call forward our fifth grade teacher, Jessica McLard, and then her fourth grade teacher from last year, Sarah Bradley. And let's have Stella come up as well.
Thank you for having us here this evening. I am both honored and humbled to be standing here this evening to celebrate a truly remarkable achievement. Tonight, we get to recognize Stella Hawley, a wonderful student and a fantastic young mathematician. This past spring, Stella did something incredible. She got a perfect score on the fourth grade math test. That means she answered every single math problem correctly. Stop and think about that for a moment. Every fraction problem, every multiplication problem, every geometry problem, every single challenge the test could throw at her, she worked through it and solved it correctly. Here's the thing, this remarkable achievement didn't just happen by accident. I had a front row seat to watch Stella grow as an empowered learner all year. She always participated in class discussions and asked great questions, and her love for learning was clear. Her perfect score is not only a sign of her intelligence, but more importantly, it's a result of her self-awareness of her strengths and challenges, her capacity to persist when striving to reach a goal, and her ability to think creatively and critically when working through a task. Stella has proved that when you try your best and believe in yourself, amazing things can happen. She embodies every attribute that we work so hard to cultivate in our students at Mosaic. Stella, we are so proud of you. You are an inspiration to me and the entire Mosaic community. You've shown that with hard work and a love for learning, you can achieve anything you set your mind to. Congratulations, Stella.
I think we found our next board representative when she's in high school. Okay, next is Rogers Elementary, Dr. Patrick Keno.
My name is Dr. Patrick Keno, and I am the principal of Rogers Elementary School. And we are here tonight to recognize the members of our STAND committee, they will explain that to you in a moment, and their teacher advisors. I just want to make a note that we at Rogers seek to empower our students each and every day so that they know that they can make a lasting impact on the world. And so it starts on our campus at 7700 Fine Road. So the members of our STAND committee are Charlotte Kruger, Xander Cook, Macy Manis, Leila Smith, Lucy DeCibato, and Molly Justbig. And the two advisors were Ms. Julia St. Louis and Mrs. Kara Sapienza. And now our students are going to say a few words to you.
Our group started in the art room, and we had so many ideas. Dr. Keno decided we should be the leaders for our fifth grade year.
Our first order of business was to decide, was to decide our theme for the 2025 to 2026 school year.
We decided to call ourselves STAND Kids. STAND stands for Students Talk About New Decisions.
We decided that the theme should be Inside Out because it fits our school. It feels like a safe place for students to be able to express their feelings.
Thank you for having us here tonight. We hope you will come visit our Hall of Emotions to see our work.
And some of the members have a gift to give each of you, so thanks for the opportunity to speak about this amazing group of young people that we have at Rogers. Thank you.
I have a quick shout-out really quick. For those of you who don't know, last year we had the pleasure of inducting a Melville Hall of Fame member who was the primary animator for Inside Out 1 and Inside Out 2, Melville High School alumni.
Thank you for sharing the wonderful group with us and the stickers. These are awesome. I hope it doesn't look like me. I don't know. All right. Next is MNEA, the Melville NEA, with Mrs. Cindy Kidwell and Mrs. Sarah Regan are here.
Hello, thank you. My name is Cindy Kidwell, and I am co-president of Melville NEA.
And I'm Sarah Regan, the other co-president.
Tonight, we have two students, a student from Mosaic and Rogers, so we'll start with
Good evening. My name is Justin McLard, and I am one of the Studio 5 teachers from Mosaic. And on behalf of our staff, I am proud to recognize Isaac Regan as our NEA Student of the Month. Isaac truly exemplifies what it means to be a well-rounded and engaged learner. As a critical and creative thinker, Isaac approaches challenges with curiosity and insight. Whether solving complex math problems or exploring new ideas in writing, he consistently thinks outside the box and makes connections that deepen classroom discussions. Isaac's persistence is equally impressive. No matter how difficult the task, Isaac doesn't give up. He asks thoughtful questions, seeks feedback, and demonstrates a growth mindset that inspires peers to push through their own challenges. As a natural communicator, Isaac listens actively and speaks with clarity and confidence. He collaborates effectively in group work and always contributes respectfully, ensuring every voice is heard. As an ethical and global citizen, Isaac treats others with kindness, fairness, and empathy. He shows an awareness of the world beyond the classroom and is eager to learn about and appreciate different cultures and perspectives. Congratulations, Isaac. Your dedication, thoughtfulness, and positive spirit make you a role model for the entire Melville community.
All right, next up, we have Vivian from Rogers.
Good evening. My name is Megan McKelvey. I'm the librarian at Rogers Elementary, and I am speaking on behalf of Mrs. Depew, the art teacher who nominated Vivian. Vivian has been such a wonderful new addition to Rogers this year. She is always eager to lend a hand to her classmates and finds thoughtful ways to help around the classroom. Her kindness, creativity, and sense of humor makes her such a joy to be around. She is a fantastic role model to her friends, and we are so lucky that she is a part of our school family. Congratulations, Vivian.
All right. Moving on to open period for patron comments relating to board agenda items. We do not have anyone signed up for that. Next is five student achievement, Mosaic Elementary, Dr. Scott Clark. Before you get started, Dr. Clark, I'd like to mention to the public that there are many questions that we've asked in advance of our board meeting on eboards that Dr. Clark has answered. So if you would like to see those, please take a look at our Melville School District website. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Scott Clark. I'm very fortunate and lucky to be the principal at Mosaic Elementary School, and I'm happy to be here with you tonight. Believe it or not, we are in our ninth year as a school, and the ninth year provides the opportunity for reflection and growth and allows us to set a clear direction for our future. Our theme this year, and you've saw it on Mrs. Bradley's and Mrs. McLard's shirt, is Learn, Grow, and Transform. And this champions the forward momentum and is a direct expression of one of our pillars of purposeful evolution. Our Mosaic staff has already begun this important work. This summer, they launched an ongoing professional development series with our curriculum department and coaches. The primary objective for this year is to seamlessly integrate ELA, English Language Arts Instruction, into our project-based learning model, enhancing the educational experience for all students and developing alignment of these practices among all of our studios. This is a picture from this summer, actually, where we had an opportunity to bring Mosaic staff, staff from our middle school academies, staff from Flex, and also our stretch teachers together with the training with I4PL. Next, student engagement. In addition to a focus on ELA and PBL this school year, our second through fifth grade classrooms continue to grow in their knowledge and implementation of building, thinking, classroom strategies in their classrooms. Mosaic teachers are implementing building, thinking classrooms in their studios to foster critical thinking, strengthen collaboration among the students, and enhance the student engagement in mathematics. This is a second grade studio here where students, I'm sorry, excuse me, this is a third grade studio where they are working together on a math problem. Our current enrollment is 266 students, and Mosaic continues to experience a little bit of growth. You can see that on the chart. Both our student population and our attendance rates have shown an upward trend over the last three years. This growth is a testament to the strong community demand for the distinct educational experiences that we provide at Mosaic. Furthermore, the rising attendance figures also affirm that our students are thriving in a positive and engaging academic environment. Our staff demographics, Mosaic teaching staff bring a wide variety of experiences and expertise to the classroom. A significant percentage of our teachers have been teaching more than 10 years, and over 90% of our teachers have pursued advanced degrees beyond a bachelor's degree. In doing so, our teachers have really exemplified for our students and have been a model of what it means to be a lifelong learner, being a lifelong learner actually is in our mission Over the past three years, historical iReady ELA data has demonstrated consistent growth in the percentage of students performing at grade level. Through intentional instruction, strong collaboration among staff and students, and a personalized approach to learning, nearly 88% of our students are achieving at grade The same level of intentional instruction has also provided high achievement results in mathematics. Spring iReady maths data indicates that more than 85% of our students are performing at grade level. I'm confident that the continued implementation of building, thinking classrooms, strategies in our studios will not only further strengthen student performance data, but also deepen students' conceptual understanding and provide a stronger foundation in mathematics. Although we are very proud of our performance data, our work is never finished. Through the PLC framework, we continue to review student data and daily analysis to make best programming decisions for our students. In a partnership between classroom teachers, academic interventionists, and our students, data is reviewed and goals are established to establish action steps that lead to student success. This is the power of personalized learning within a PLC model. Mosaic's first school improvement plan goal centers around the implementation of PLCs or professional learning communities at each grade level, supported by a systematic process for collecting and analyzing data and to inform instruction and drive student achievement. This goal serves as the foundation for our remaining eight SIP goals. By examining historical data and performing trends, Mosaic staff developed rigorous yet obtainable goals for student growth in district ELA and math benchmarks as well as state assessments. Our school improvement goal continue with a focus on improving a sense of belonging among our students and staff. To increase a sense of belonging, we must establish and foster an environment where all school community members feel they have a voice, and their own unique skills and passions are recognized. We believe that we establish that each and every day with our staff and with our students, with our family and community members. Things that we're looking forward to, there's a lot to look forward to. This week, the Mosaic staff had their third session to their year-long professional development series. District Coach Anna McGuire led our teachers through a PD session yesterday afternoon with a focus on the seven elements of project-based learning. I provide it for our board members, a handout for you as well, so please reference that at your leisure. Hopefully, you find that helpful. If you have any questions, please let me know. The introduction, so they reviewed the seven elements of project-based learning. This introduction will further develop the staff's understanding of the elements of PBL and how they can be intertwined with the core content areas, ELA, science, social studies, and math. In addition, this year, this year-long comprehension plan is designed to support the continued professional growth of our teachers by providing dedicated time for learning, collaborative planning, and reflection on the best practices in English Language Arts and project-based learning. This plan will not only foster individual teacher development, but also directly reinforce our school's mission, vision, and our five pillars. I want to thank you for the opportunity this evening to highlight many of the exciting things and learning experiences that are taking place at Mosaic, as well as our ongoing plans to support teacher development and to pursue student success. The Mosaic staff remain deeply committed to serving our students and our families. We take great pride in the community that we've built together. Mosaic is more than just a school, it's our home. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And as, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you and your staff. We know you don't do it alone, and your staff is incredible, and we love seeing your success and all the improvements that are happening in your school, both academically and socially. And thank you for bringing the added reading material. We appreciate that.
Absolutely. I know you guys have enough time on your hands, just, yeah, just dig in.
Yes, but very thrilled. I can't believe it's been nine years, but I do remember sitting in the audience when we approved you and we got to see the famous, here we go.
Here we go. Whoa!
Yeah, I think you, I don't know, last, yeah.
Dr. Keno has to heel click next.
That being said, Rogers Elementary, Dr. Patrick Keno.
I didn't do any stretching before this presentation, so it's probably best not to, yes, yes, but it's best not to emulate Dr. Clark. And Dr. Hawk, thank you so much for not stealing my thunder. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. So good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Patrick Keno, the principal of Rogers Elementary School. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm grateful for the chance to share some of the great things happening at Rogers. This year, our scholars have more opportunities than ever to get involved. Through the generosity of our district and our parent organization, we now have 15 student clubs, the most in our school's history. These clubs are for our scholars from kindergarten through fifth grade. And these clubs aren't just about filling time. They give kids the chance to explore interests, build friendships, and step into leadership roles. When students feel connected outside the classroom, they're more engaged inside the classroom, and that's exactly what we want. Alongside our clubs... more engaged inside the classroom, and that's exactly what we want. Alongside our clubs, every class also has a buddy class. Students pair up across grade levels to foster connections and strengthen their sense of belonging. These are the everyday ways engagement is built into the life of Rogers. As Dr. Hogg alluded to earlier, along with these opportunities for our current students, we're deeply investing in supporting future Rogers Bears and other soon-to-be scholars in our district. A program I'm especially proud of is WonderWorks, which recently received a national promising practice award, one of only 199 schools throughout the nation to receive this recognition. WonderWorks supports our youngest learners before they even start school. What makes it even richer is the partnership with parents as teachers and the chance for our Rogers students to volunteer in the WonderWorks classroom. It's powerful to see our older kids showing care and patience with these little ones. It reminds me that learning isn't one directional. We all grow together. In regards to our demographics, our enrollment shifted from 421 students in 2023, 2024 to 398 this past year. But with a newer subdivision and another proposed, we are anticipating growth at Rogers. That means more families, more kids, and more opportunities to live out our mission of ensuring high levels of learning for all, students and adults. We continue to monitor free reduced lunch, English learners, and IEP services closely to ensure that every student gets what they need. One point of pride has been our attendance. Three years ago, our proportional attendance was 84.3%. Last year, it rose to 94.7%. That tells me that our families want to be at Rogers because they feel connected to our school. We also have an experienced and stable staff. Of our 29 teachers, 20 have more than 16 years of experience, 22 have been at Rogers at least 16, at least six years, excuse me, and 14 hold advanced degrees. That kind of depth gives our students consistency and care. On the academic side, we've seen progress. In reading, 78.3% of our students ended last school year on mid or above grade level, slightly up from 77.8% the year before. But the bigger story is the gaps were closing. In fall of '24, 15.4% of our students were two or more grade levels behind in reading. By spring, that dropped all the way to 3%. That's the kind of growth that changes a child's school experience. We track progress closely, adjust instruction quickly, and keep parents in the loop so they know how to support their child at home. In math, the story is similar. At the end of last year, 76.7% of our students finished on, mid, or above grade level compared to 75.2% the year before. And again, we saw real progress last school year with our learners who started the year two or more grade levels below their current grade level. 13.7% started the year this way, and only 3.2% ended the year that way. To make this happen, our teachers are using approaches like Dr. Clark mentioned of building-thinking classrooms to get our students solving problems together and talking about math in meaningful ways. Our interventionist works daily with small groups, while grade-level teams use iReady data to plan instruction and provide enrichment for kids who are ready for more. Recently, our teams dug into the latest iReady results using the resources provided in our district-created PLC playbook to plan next steps. That mix of remediation, enrichment, and high-quality instruction is how we move every student forward. All of this connects back to our school improvement plan, which focuses on three primary areas: academic achievement, belonging, and well-being. These goals keep us grounded in what matters most: closing gaps, providing enrichment, building relationships, and making sure Rogers is a place where students and staff feel safe and supported so they can learn and flourish. Looking ahead, as our students mentioned earlier, our theme this year is Inside Out. Many of you know the film. It's about the emotions that shape who we are and how we connect with others. We've used this theme to help students talk about feelings, build resilience, and create what we call core memories at school, the moments that make them feel like they truly belong. For our staff, the theme is about flourishing. We're checking in monthly to nurture a culture of care and belonging, and through our PLC work with the 15-day challenge, we're keeping learning cycles focused and effective so every student continues to grow. Inside Out isn't just a movie reference, it's a lens for building a stronger, more connected community. At Rogers, success for each person isn't just our school vision, it's how we approach every student, every family, every day. We believe in learning, belonging, and well-being, and we're working to make sure that those aren't just words on a poster, but a lived experience in every classroom, every hallway, and every relationship. Thank you for supporting our kids and our school.
Well, thank you. Basically, the same thing I said to Scott and our Dr. Clark, amazing results happening at your school. We hear amazing things in the community about both Rogers and Mosaic, so congratulations, and a big, big thank you to your staff also, because we know you don't do this alone, because you have a great support staff behind you, helping you every angle of the way. So, we just really appreciate everything that all of our educators do for our kids, so thank you, thank you. And board questions are on e-boards, so thank you. Heel click, cartwheel, anything?
I did one before the tax rate hearing.
Oh, okay.
So I probably shouldn't want to do it.
That was good, then. All right, thanks. Okay, next is moving on to governance. A is SSD partnership agreement, Dr. Charity Schluter.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Dr. Charity Schluter, and I am the Director of Special Education with SSD within Melville. I would like to begin this evening by thanking Dr. Kelly Grigsby, our Deputy Superintendent at SSD, for being here this evening. I very much appreciate her support and her partnership. I am honored to have the opportunity this evening to speak to you regarding the partnership agreement, as well as the Principal Coordinator calibration tool that we have. These are ways that I can demonstrate to you the partnership that we have with the Special School District here in Melville. But first, let me give you some background information. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, it does require states and school districts to have in effect policies and procedures concerning the provision of special education. To meet these IDEA requirements, DESI has in place the Missouri State Plan for Special Education. This state plan includes regulations with school districts on how to implement those IDEA requirements. In particular, there is Regulation 15, which is specific to establishing a special school district. To meet federal and state requirements, DESI requires each school district to adopt a local compliance plan. This plan is an abbreviated version of the state plan, and it outlines the policies and procedures that school districts will follow to implement IDEA. The local compliance plan, it must be approved by the district's Board of Education. Regulation 15 of the state plan requires special school districts and component partner districts to have assurances in place related to areas of joint and separate compliance. A general assurance document is an abbreviated version of Regulation 15, and it outlines components of the special ed process and the compliance responsibilities of both special school districts and Melville. These are signed each year and are due by October 1st. This is a visual to show you the connections between those IDEA statutes and regulations to the Missouri State Plan of Special Education, to the local compliance plan within the school district, and then that general assurance document that I previously mentioned, and part of this is what I'm excited to talk to you about tonight, the partnership agreement and the Principal Coordinator calibration tool. Our partnership agreement, what is the purpose of this document? It is to increase knowledge and awareness of expectations. It's to ensure that we have an inclusive and collaborative approach to providing our students with special education services, and it does help guide our conversations. There are seven practices, and these include staffing, teaching, learning, and accountability, collaboration of responsibilities and resources, student services, data and technology, transportation, and career and technical education. The Partner District Liaison, which is Mr. Adam Smith and myself, we meet each fall and spring to determine and assess how is our collaboration and how is our partnership going? What are our mutual responsibilities? From that, we develop action steps that are mutually agreed upon, and when necessary, we seek feedback from additional stakeholders. Both SSD and Partner Districts agree to the following: We endorse the vision, mission, and belief statements outlined in the Educational Partnership Agreement. We support collaboration and shared responsibility in providing equitable and seamless implementation of special education services for our kids. We understand that the following resources will guide collaborative efforts, and we commit to working cooperatively together to implementing the principles that have been provided within the Educational Partnership Agreement. It is a requirement that both superintendents from Special School District and Dr. Hogg here in Melville do sign this document, in addition to both board presidents of both districts, as well as a Partner District Governing Council member. I do want to share with you some amazing celebrations that we have here in Melville. We have special education representatives that are included in our district-wide committees here in Melville. As special educators, we are also included on the interview committees when hiring takes place, and we are included in general education revision and curriculum. Special education staff members attend professional learning opportunities at both the district and building levels with their colleagues. Our special education teachers are active participants at the building-level professional learning communities here in Melville. Our special education teachers have access to the materials, the instructional resources, and technology needed to access the general education curriculum here in Melville, and our building principals work diligently to participate in our special education data team meetings. The other thing I would like to mention is I would like to honor Dr. Hogg. It isn't in every district that the Director of Special Education is a part of the executive leadership team and cabinet, and I honor Dr. Hogg for the opportunity to collaborate and partner with Melville in this manner. I'm very thankful for that. Our action steps this year in regards to our partnership, we're going to partner in the implementation of charting the life course by providing training and collaborating to support our school teams with this transition. We are going to work together to increase family participation in accessing the resources and opportunities that we have within our family and community engagement department. We are going to collaborate to identify ways that our special education staff can support ongoing professional learning here within Melville. The other thing I want to mention to you tonight is our Principal and Coordinator Collaboration Tool. But in order to do that, I want to introduce you to our Special Education Administrative Team here in Melville. We have five special education coordinators here: Mr. Adam Krinsky, Mr. Andy Nieders, Mr. Brian Cupferer, Mrs. Cheryl Lawson, and Mrs. Crystal Pierce, and you can see their respective schools where they supervise the special education programming here in Melville. So the purpose of the collaboration tool that coordinators fill out with building principals, it's really designed to promote a collaborative, authentic conversation about the working relationship between a coordinator and principal. There are four focus areas in this tool. The first is communication and accessibility. The second is understanding the coordinator-principal role in advancing organizational vision and priorities. The third is collaborative decision-making, and the fourth is partnership in hiring, evaluation, and developing staff. This tool also provides consensus for the coordinator and the principal, and it is connected to that partnership agreement, specifically the area of collaboration of resources and responsibilities. It is an effective way to foster collaboration and active participation and engagement between all team members. It also provides a way, a centralized platform, to document the collaborative work that is taking place in our buildings between principals and special education coordinators. We do like to measure things, to make sure that what we're doing is working, so we do analyze the data and the metrics on this tool. It does give us some ideas of what is going well and what are some areas that we can continue to improve in. It also provides an opportunity to look at our success. In our most recent Principal Collaboration Tool results, here is the assessment criteria. One means that practice is not yet in place. Two means that it's partially in place. Three means that it's fully established for that current school year. Four means that it is sustainable and established, and it has remained consistent over more than one school year. So at the end of this assessment cycle, which took place at the end of June, you can see in the focus area of communication and accessibility, our rating was a 3.5. Understanding the role was a 3.5. Collaborative decision-making and problem-solving was a 3.6, and partnership in hiring, evaluating, and developing staff was a 3.3. I'd like to celebrate that principals and special education coordinators, they meet weekly. They meet regularly to have conversations, to collaborate, to calibrate, to review student data, so that we are making the very best decisions for our students in that building who do receive special education. This past spring, 100% of principals and coordinators did complete that tool. Our principals, as I mentioned previously, do participate in our data team meetings, and we are looking at data to review the progress on goals that our students are making. And the principal coordinator teams, they do identify that transparent communication regarding staffing and space allocation within the building, that they view that as a strength of their partnership. Some areas that we are going to work on this year, we're going to increase opportunities for principals and special education coordinators to complete walkthroughs, both in general education classrooms, as well as in special education classrooms. We're going to increase collaboration between principals and special education coordinators to identify professional development topics for all staff members, and we're going to see an increased decision-making regarding the relevance of those professional learning topics for all staff members within the building. And finally, I just have some important dates for you. The partnership agreement as presented to the board, it is due no later than October 1st. Once it's been signed, we will submit that to Dr. Backland's office, the Superintendent of Special School District. And then that Principal Collaboration Tool, our baseline data for this year is due by September 30th, and we will begin reviewing that to see what improvements we can make, develop those action steps, and then it will be completed. The final baseline will be due June 30th of 2026. Again, it is an honor to have the opportunity to talk to you about the phenomenal relationship that we have here in this district, and I'm so honored to be a part of it.
All right. So you may have any questions other than what's already been asked on e-boards? Nothing? All right. I want to show my appreciation not only to you, but also to Dr. Grigsby for attending tonight. We appreciate your partnership. I really appreciate your report. I think this is the most thorough that I've ever seen, so that, so understanding the relationship and the collaboration between SSD and Melville is powerful knowledge for us to have, so thank you for the thorough explanation, and thank you for your leadership and all of your staff also. But most importantly, you left off the date of, do we have a Special Olympic date yet?
Not that I am aware of, but as soon as I have it, I will give it to you.
Okay, make sure you let us know.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's such a lovely event to come see the kids, have so much fun, so thank you.
We appreciate that you're able to join us for those events.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, wait a minute, we actually have to approve your thing. So sorry.
Oh, that's, that's okay.
My bad. If I could please get a motion to approve the 2025-2026 SSD partnership agreement as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will get that signed and back to your superintendent. Thanks. All right. Moving on to professional development report, Dr. Whitney Moss.
Good evening. As she said, I am Dr. Whitney Moss, Executive Director of Teaching, Learning, and Professional Development in the Melville School District, and I'm excited to share with you some of our professional development plans for this school year. So as we know, high-quality professional development has a direct correlation with an increase in student achievement. And we also know that the single most important in-school factor for our student success is investing with our educators' continuous growth and their development so that we provide them with the effectiveness to teach our students. We have a strategic alignment of that staff development with our district goals and to ensure that all staff have those necessary skills and the knowledge to support our student's success. That strategic alignment prevents disconnect efforts and also ensures that we have a That strategic alignment prevents disconnect efforts and also ensures that we have a cohesive approach to our student's success. So how do we develop that professional development plan? We start with a professional development needs assessment. This occurs in January of each year and is administered to all of our certified staff. Some topics that you might see on this needs assessment would be specific to the level or the content that that educator teaches. We like to focus on areas that we know our certified employees have expressed that they would like training on. We also look at student engagement and student support efforts. Technology focus, what type of technology are our educators wanting to use instructionally? And then we provide an opportunity where they can also list other areas that are not prior indicated on the survey. Then we take that needs assessment, and we develop a district improvement plan. That district improvement plan is aligned to our needs assessment and also our district goals and strategic plan. For this year, we take a look at our priority areas for professional development. We have a commitment to high-quality curriculum and instruction, and within that, we're looking at implementing our District 555 High-Yield Instructional Strategies across all content areas, looking at equal participation among our students, implementing our priority standards, and looking for mastery of those foundational skills. For collaborative professional learning communities, as our principals spoke of, we're looking at a focus on learning, a collaborative culture, and being results-oriented. We also want our staff to be data-informed in decision-making and to have assessment literacy. We use those PLC data cycles, common formative assessments, and summative assessments, along with those high-yield instructional strategies, to help us set SMART goals and make actionable steps based on our achievement data to meet our students' needs. A glimpse into the professional development that we are providing when it comes to high-yield instructional strategies, this year, we were able to partner with Sidlet's Education, and Sidlet's Education's mission is to support school districts and teachers with enhancing language development for all students, especially English learners. And at Sidlet's Education, they share with educators the mission of helping students grow in academic literacy. So this August, we provided Seven Steps Training, which is the book you see to the left, to all of our educators pre-K-12 across all content areas. We have an opportunity to also have job-embedded coaching at targeted schools and are using our Melville coaches as well to supplement the additional schools that we aren't able to serve through the Sidlet's grant. We also have QSSA training in February, where our schools will all participate in a follow-up professional development to the development that we provided in August. Then we take a look at our building professional development plans. The building plans are developed based on their specific achievement data and are guided by our district goals as well as their building needs. Some top priority development areas that the buildings have indicated are those high-yield instructional strategies, they want to continue their PLC work, developing sense of belonging among all students and staff, social-emotional behavioral learning, content-based PD, and then also utilizing student data and performance to make data-informed decisions. We know that we want PD to not be a separate initiative, but integrated into part of our school's strategies for strategic growth. We want to be data-driven and tailored to the unique needs of each one of our schools. So taking a look at what that looks like here in the Melville School District for our certified staff, these are the dates that our staff engage in professional development. You'll see in the green, we have full-day opportunities for professional development. We also have two early releases this school year, and then there later is a half-day professional development. We're able to provide five full days, two half-days, and two early releases for professional development totaling 41 hours of professional development. How do we measure the effectiveness of our PD? We take a look at short, medium, and long-term indicators. We're looking at the teacher feedback so that we can make real-time adjustments to the content or the delivery of our future professional development sessions. We also are looking at the quality of collaborative work that comes out of our PD and making sure we're providing targeted support or coaching to teams that might be needing that service. For medium-term indicators, we're looking at the effectiveness in our data-driven decision-making. Are our staff data-literate, and are they able to make those data-driven decisions? And then following up with any training that they might need to further support those efforts. Long-term, we're wanting an improvement in our student achievement and our MAP and EOC scores, so then we're looking at trends and where do we have areas of best practices that we can take over to other contents and what areas might need further focus. We also are looking for a reduction in performance gaps, and we make sure that we adjust using targeted strategies to address those gaps as we find them. Teacher leadership capacity is also another thing that we are looking to build within our school district, providing opportunities for teachers to be mentors to new teachers as well as their colleagues, PD facilitators, or even department heads at the secondary Then our financial commitments to the professional development plan, you can look at these into four different areas. We have an allocation for substitute teachers. That is for when our teachers potentially go to professional development during their contracted time, and we want to make sure that we have a substitute there so that we don't have disrupted education for our students, and that is on a limited basis. Then we also have allocation for an extra-duty payment, where teachers are participating in professional development outside of their contracted time. A lot of times, that happens outside of school, after school, during the summertime, and we want to make sure we compensate them for their time. We also provide them for benefits when we pay them for extra duties. And then purchases of services and materials, that would cover anything from the coaching that we bring in, professionals that we bring in to present to our educators, conferences that our educators attend, as well as the materials that support those efforts as well. Looking at the allocation source and then also the allocations, we do know that the state requires 1% of our DESI funding to be spent on professional development, and here is the breakdown of those four areas for this school year. And I was so excited to hear our school reports because they talked about a lot of these things that I have on the screen. So for PLCs, that has been a big effort that we have done the past few years. We partner with Solution Tree, and professional learning communities is really striving to increase that achievement and also teacher collaboration, as our principals spoke to. We're really looking at those four questions in supporting our students. What do we want our students to be able to know? How do we know that they've learned it? What do we do if they haven't? And what do we do if they already have learned it and they've already mastered that material? We've been supporting our educators through that PLC work and PLC process for the past few years, and we're going to continue to do so and look at strengthening those efforts and taking that PLC to the next step. Also, you see on here, I4PL, Dr. Clark was able to speak to that professional development we participated in with our Mosaic staff, our Academy staff, our gifted educators, and then also our Flex educators at the high school. They provide customized professional development, looking at learner agency and a culture of inquiry. They're making data-informed instruction and personalized learning decisions, looking at those flexible learning spaces and technology integration. They also provide opportunities for site visits, and Melville has hosted some of those site visits where other schools are coming to see our schools, especially at Mosaic and Flex, where they're able to showcase all the great things we have going on in Melville. Building Thinking Classrooms was also another thing that they talked about, and I believe Dr. Clark had a picture of vertical, non-permanent surfaces where students were engaging in math on a vertical surface. That is one of those instructional strategies that is within Building Thinking Classrooms. And Building Thinking Classroom promotes 14 different instructional strategies that really gets kids thinking about the mathematics. And also, when students are working on math vertically, it's a whiteboard, and they're able to erase mistakes, promotes collaboration, promotes risk-taking, and also makes it visible for the teacher when they're circulating the room and also other groups as well. Math 314 provides coaching for our educators to help our educators as well be learners themselves and engage in that risk-taking inquiry when it comes to mathematics. I already spoke about Sidlet's Education. MYSI, we have partnerships with MYSI as well, and they are focused on real-world questioning and also providing opportunity for our students to engage in figuring out science versus just learning about science and those hands-on opportunities for our learners. They use the 5E instructional model of engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate in their inquiry. And lastly, Amplify CKLA, you see up there, that was a new program that we adopted last year based on the science of reading, where we are looking to promote proficient readers and writers and critical thinkers on how to read, but also providing them with the background knowledge and vocabulary that we know they need to truly understand what they're reading. And then thinking about the commitments that our Board of Education, you all, and also our district commits to our educators when it comes to professional development. We know that Policy GCL references recognizing that relationship between high-quality professional development, and as I spoke earlier, to that student achievement, and therefore, we need to make a commitment to high-quality professional development for our educators. And you can see here some different pieces of commitments that we have made as a Board of Education and then also as a school district to promote growing our educators to the best of our ability. So thank you for letting me share with you this evening.
All right. Somebody, go ahead, Jean.
I have a question, and if I overlook this in the advanced questions, I apologize. But what percentage would you say of the requested PD is now aiming at AI among all the staff?
Gosh, I would... We do cover AI within certain sessions, but right now, I would have to get you the figure on what percentage of request. I could look at our needs assessment and find the exact percentage for you.
Okay.
But we do have some sessions that we're offering to support AI as well.
Okay. I would think it'd be in pretty high demand right now with the way things are going.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Anybody else?
All right. So thank you, Dr. Moss, for your presentation. Also, thank you to our staff for partaking in the continuous improvement and pushing Melville forward. I think we also owe a thank you to our community, because if I remember correctly, prior to Prop R passing, we were really struggling to make ends meet with professional development, not really having the financial backing to properly do professional development for our staff. I'm sure we did it to some degree, but I specifically remember me sitting in meetings before I was on the board, and that was a big issue, that professional development was being cut because of our finance and our bad financial situations. So thank you, community, for your support through the past 10 years. It's really making a difference, and I think we're really seeing the results academically.
I was excited to hear those schools talk about the things that we're doing.
Yeah, in all the schools. So congratulations to the district and the community as a whole, because this is serving our kids. Not only our employees are dedicating themselves to their own improvements, but it gets passed on to the kids in the school, and that's what we're here for, right? So thank you very much, and we hope you are enjoying your new position, because I feel like it's really going to help the district. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Transportation, Dan Gilman.
Good evening, Melville Board of Education. I'm Dan Gilman, Director of Transportation. I would like to start by saying thank you to my entire staff of the Transportation Department. They do an exceptional job day in and day out. Also, I'd like to say thank you to you. Your assistance in June helped us with recruiting drivers to the district. We have hired six drivers since then and had more applications in the past few months than we've had in the last few years. So just want to say thank you. Moving on. We do about 68% of the district. We transport on a daily basis. These are February numbers, which have already been audited, so those are actual numbers. Some districts do not do less than a mile from the school. We do. So that's how many numbers of students it would impact if we went less than a mile. We scored 96% this year on inspection. I think we're pushing close to 30 years in a row of over 90% for DESI, so we're doing really well. We run 102 buses. We're replacing five old ones this year, and we also maintain facilities, food service, technology, and driver's education out of our two-bay shop. Current staffing, 73 regular drivers, not including activity drivers. We have three drivers in training with two more hopefully coming up next week to start training. We got three routes right now are being driven by activity drivers or others, and for vacancies, we still have nine regular bus driver vacancies and eight activity drivers. Prop E helped. Moving the wages up in June, get competitive, it was dramatic. We recover all our routes, except we continue to have vacancies, and our best recruiting tool is word of mouth. The TV ads are working really well, and so is Facebook. And I have to say thank you to HR, Dr. Hogg, Marshall, and Jessica Pillo for, you know, helping us get this going. So that's all I have. Any questions?
I know that I've been reading that some districts are putting GPS systems in their buses. Is that something we've been looking at for the potential future?
I have an old system of GPS that's been in the buses since 2012.
Oh.
So we've already been done it. I just need to upgrade the system.
Yeah, because I mean, I think if Fox just put one in.
They did.
For tracking their buses. And I mean, if we've had something that's been in place for 2012, that's good.
They're trying to catch up.
Right. But did not know we had that, so thank you for letting us know.
Yes.
So you thanked us at the beginning of your presentation, and I don't accept that thank you. We thank you. I mean, you're the one doing the work. You're the one out there every day, you and your staff and all the bus drivers, so we thank them very much. Also, want to thank the community, because I'm really going to go back again historically and talk about how many buses we didn't replace. In how many years, Marshall?
Five years, we bought one.
In five years, we bought one, and now we are able to stay on schedule, basically replacing five buses a year, which is what needs to happen in order to keep them from not being 30 years old before we replace them, right?
Actually, when I got here, they hadn't bought buses in three years.
Right.
And so, yeah, and then once Marshall came on and we got everything established and got the rotation plan going, obviously, the fleet looks much better than it did when I first walked in the door.
Yes, yes. So again, we owe a thanks to our community for supporting us and supporting Prop R, and that was sort of the turning point of being able to start replacing buses too. But congratulations on your excellent ratings all the time, and thank your staff. We know that a lot of times, they are overworked and they have a lot going on, so we do appreciate them, and we will not forget any of the past things we've talked about, right, Jean? And hopefully, your new offices will be installed soon. They are delayed, I understand, which really stinks, but yeah, I guess that's beyond our control. But anyway, thank you, thank you, and we appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. Next is Federal Programs Data, Dr. Laurie Tretter-Larkin.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Dr. Laurie Tretter-Larkin, and I'm the Director of Fine Arts and Federal Grants, and I will be presenting on the 25-26 Federal Programs Data Dashboard this evening. Public schools are eligible to receive federal funds through the Every Student Succeeds Act Consolidated Federal Programs Grant, provided they complete the grant application on EPIGS, DESI's online program. Federal dollars from these programs flow through each State Department of Education to the local education agencies. Federal program grants are due annually July 1st. The Melville School District qualifies for the following title programs. Title I is used for improving basic programs. Title I provides financial assistance to schools with high numbers or high percentages of children from low-income families to help ensure that all children meet the challenging state academic standards. Federal funds are currently allocated through four statutory formulas. They are based primarily on census poverty estimates and the cost of education in each state. state. Title II is used for teacher recruitment training and/or principal training. The purpose of this grant is to increase student academic achievement through strategies such as improving teacher and principal quality, increasing the number of high-qualified teachers in the classroom, highly-qualified principals and assistant principals in schools, and recruiting teachers to increase academic achievement. Within our district, Title II is used primarily for professional development. Title III is used for language instruction for limited English proficient and immigrant students. The purpose of Title III Limited English Proficiency is to ensure that all students have a fair and equal and significant opportunity to obtain a high-quality education and reach at a minimum proficiency on challenging state academic tests and standards. And then Title IV is used for student academic support and academic enrichment. Title IV is intended to improve a student's academic achievement, providing all students with access to well-rounded education, to improve school conditions for student learning, and to improve the use of technology. This slide shows our total Title I, II, and III, IV supports the district receives from the federal government. There are multiple factors in making up this calculation of federal funding. The combination of student enrollment, the federal budget allocations are just two factors. Another factor is that is used is census poverty percentage. For reference, in 2024-25, Melville School District percentage was 7.18%. In 2025-26, the census data percentage decreased to 6.44%. This slide shows a total number of funds by program over the last four years. When speaking on Title I funding, Beasley, Beerbaum, Forter, and Troutwine are our school-wide Title I buildings in our district. Funds are used to pay for the salaries of 8.5 reading teachers who work directly with Title I students at those schools. Title I funds also pay for eight part-time paraprofessionals to help support students K through 5 in reading and math supports. Supplemental materials are not budgeted for this year. The schools prioritize salaries for staff to help directly help students and professional development focused on professional learning communities and trainings for Title I building staff. You will see there is a non-public set aside. Non-publics that reside in one of our Title I school attendance areas can qualify for services. Each school's budget is based on their enrollment and deprivation count. Non-public schools are required to apply for these services through DESI yearly. We currently serve seven non-public schools that have students eligible for that equitable Within Title II funding, under salaries, these funds are used for the instructional innovation data specialist who works in the Curriculum Technology Department to coach teachers. The other salary is for the K-5 instructional coach. The job responsibilities include coaching and providing professional development, and both of these salaries align with his funding source. Purchase services, like Dr. Moss said, are going to professional development for staff, including core areas, English, Science, Math, and Social Studies, and other trainings to support staff with instructional strategies. You'll also see the non-public set aside there for any non-public school that actually resides within the boundaries of Melville School District. Their budget is based on enrollment, and we currently do serve five schools with equitable In Title III funding, we have the salary and benefits for one ELD coach to assist pre-K and 12 teachers with instructional strategies. We also have extra duty pay for outside of the contract day for trainings. We have purchase services for conferences and trainings to support our ELD population, and materials that are supplemental distributed among the 19 buildings for the ELD learning needs. You'll also see we have parental engagement set aside for our multilingual families as we plan to host parent nights on multiple topics. The last category is immigrant. We plan to use this funding to purchase supplemental learning materials for newcomers and professional development around the newcomer students. Our immigrant population has increased over the years, though you can see the allocation has decreased. As we did some analysis, it seems that overall, the overall allocation given to Missouri schools for this year for Title III has decreased for all districts. In addition, last year, only 38 districts qualified for the funding, and this year, 61 districts qualified for the funding. And then in Title IV, since our district receives over $30,000 for Title IV, we have percentage requirements of expenditures in three categories. So, at least 20% needs to be in safe and healthy schools, which we use for the SEL dashboard to help identify, help staff identify student needs. 20% in well-rounded, updating fine art materials within the performing arts classrooms, and then no more than 15%. We anticipate hosting a community speaker on technology topics such as AI. You may notice that the purchase service column is at zero for this year. We received guidance that the SEL dashboard would fit better in the materials bucket, so we changed that based on the guidance. We also do serve five non-public schools in equitable services through this fund. Lastly, we do have an additional number of grants this year. The first grant is the Refugee School Impact Grant. This grant provides funds to school districts with a significant number of refugee students. The purpose of this grant is to help students ages 5 through 18 and their families acclimate to the US school system and improve academic performance. Also, the Afghan Supplemental Appropriations Act Support for Schools Grant. This grant is a specific program under the Refugee School Impact Initiative. Its goal is to provide culturally and linguistically appropriate support and services to help Afghan refugee students and their families successfully integrate to the community. Whitney Moss did, Dr. Moss did talk about the Sidletz Training, and these two grants did support that training. We also have the Feminine Hygiene Product Grant. This grant provides funding to public schools to offer free feminine hygiene products to students. This program aims to give hygiene products to students, reduce class absences, and promote a more supportive and inclusive school environment. And then lastly, we have the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. Beasley Elementary is the Melville school that qualified for this grant. This grant is designated, is designed to advance literacy skills for students. It provides funding to schools to implement evidence-based literacy programs, professional development for teachers, and resources to support disadvantaged children. This is a four-year grant, so we will anticipate receiving these grant funds through 28, 29 school year. So, thank you for letting me share with you today.
All right. May I have any other questions?
That grant is $45,000 each year?
Each year, anticipated each year.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the non-public segment of the funding, what that looks like? Do they come to us for services, or do we give them the money for the services?
So, yes.
Not we, but the federal government, sorry.
Yes. So, we're the bypass entity of that money. So, all the money comes through us, and then we organize based on allowability of those funds. So, as far as Title I schools go, we will normally, we do have, they can come to us. There's multiple. They can come to us. We can hire their teachers as far as vendors, or we could also hire out like Kumon from last year. So, multiple different ways we can serve those students in Title I. In Title II and Title IV, we go through the grant, we see what can be allocated, we see their needs, and then we are the passer entity, so we do provide that to them. Yes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else? All right. But thank you. Thanks for all your work on this. This is a lot of information, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Insurance Renewals and Report, Marshall Crutcher.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher, the CFO, and I'm presenting on the health insurance renewal. So, the summary of what we've got is really the district rates increasing 4%. There's no coverage changes, and there's no increase to the employee-only rate. There haven't been any increases to the employee-only rate since 2015, so this will be the 11th year of having the exact same rates for employees only. The cost of this rate increase is $255,000 for the fiscal year 26 portion of January through June, and that is $380,000 less than what we budgeted, because the budget was based on a 10% rate increase instead of the 4% rate increase that we're able to go with. The 2025 projected fund balance of our self-insurance fund is forecast right now to come in around $12.2 million, and that compares to the 2026 projection, the ending balance for 2026 of $11.5 million. 2026 budget for expense claims is projected to increase 10%, which is $1.4 million additional expense. The stop-loss premiums are projected to go up 20%, which is an increase of $300,000. And the net loss for 2026 is projected to be $629,000, which is really in line with what our targets are right now, because we have healthy cash balances in the fund. We want to target, right now, with these healthy balances, we want to target between $500,000 to $750,000 net losses in the fund until we reduce the fund balance to about $9 million, because we're doing well, and we do have healthy fund balances. So, when we take a look back, just for a quick minute, and we look at the 2013 fund balance, it was $1.5 million at the end of 2013. Now, here we are in 2026, projecting a fund balance of $11.5 million, which is a $10 million increase from back in 2013. So, we've really come a long way. Are there any questions?
I don't have any. Anybody have any? No. Once again, though, good job on, but, oh, I'm so sorry.
I just, and this is going from being in the insurance committee, I really appreciate the fact that we have the breakdowns that you do to understand where those changes are, and without that, it would make a lot of these numbers seem a little bit hard to comprehend, so I appreciate you taking the time in the committee as well as providing it to us to understand where the gaps are and where the fund balance changes are as we look at those.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that it's really great that our fund balances are healthy now, so that we have something to fall back on if we have any catastrophic situations. And, you know, I don't like raising anyone's health insurance. No one likes to pay insurance premiums, but at the end of the day, the fact that we've been able to keep our employee-only rates steady or static is notable. So, thank you for your diligent planning and projections and figuring all this out for the staff and the community as a whole, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I need to get a motion to approve the insurance rates for the calendar year 2026 as presented.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right. Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is our strategic plan update, the Smith Brothers, Dr. Ryan Smith and Dr. Adam Smith. It's been a while since I've said that.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Brian Smith. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Academics.
And I'm Adam Smith, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
And tonight, we're here just to be able to provide you a quick update with regards to our district strategic planning process. No motion is needed. This is simply an update. So, with regards to the timeline, as you can see, the green check marks up here represent items that have already been completed. This process began back in January earlier this year, so about seven, eight, nine months ago. You can see there are steps that we have already completed in this process. We've sought out feedback from our community. We have been, we've worked hard collectively. We've also taken a ton of community feedback with regards to our strategic plan, and we have been hosting some continuing sessions based around five different themes.
So, you can see that in September, we have started with the first theme of academics. We've also wanted student support, and coming up in October, we're going to have a couple more themes. And you can see throughout the progression in November, we will revise the strategic plan draft based on all the feedback that we've received and the community events, present the draft, draft to the board on December of 2025, and then request the Board of Education to approve the new strategic plan in March of '26, and it will be planned starting on July 1st, 2026 through the 2031 school year. All right. Opportunities for participation that are coming up. The Strategic Plan Steering Committee will meet at Bernard Middle School on the following dates. On October 8th at 6:30 PM, the theme will be facilities, operation, and finance. And then on October 22nd at 6:30 PM, also at Bernard, the theme will be community involvement, and we hope to see everyone there.
To give a quick update with regards to theme one, which was academics, the two bullets that you see up here are the two goals that are our draft goals right now. They may or may not be finalized, simply continuing to take the feedback that we received from the community, but they have been around increasing the foundational skills in elementary literacy and numeracy, as well as to be able to offer a viable curriculum and course offerings so that all students are college, career, and life-ready. And from the September 3 meeting that we had around academics, the bullets that you see here are the, is the feedback that we received, summary feedback from our community overall. Highlights include that there was strong support for both of the goals around literacy and numeracy, and the ensuring that everyone is college, career, or life-ready. And you can see there's things that are defined as very important. More kids needing more support, stronger interventions, mastering grade-level skills. These are all things that we can all agree with, and so I think that that's in part why that there's been a very positive reaction from our community around this goal, and I think that you will continue to see the development of this come through. You can also see adequate staffing. There are some pieces that tend to come up, and then also may, in this one, you'll see that through theme three that they just actually presented last night.
All right. Theme two on student support, the draft goals were increasing access to student mental health resources, expand that social, emotional, and behavioral learning, SEBL, opportunities, and also ensure that we have safe and inclusive environments for all students. Some feedback that came through from the September 17th community meeting was a lot of strong support for all three goals as drafted, really desire to expand some in-school services that may include some staffing, as well as our outside supports that we have with school-based agencies, talking about explicit social-emotional learning instruction and social-emotional learning embedded into the academics at all levels across the district, continuing that professional development to ensure staff have training and all of the tools that they need to support students at all times in the district, also making sure that we have inclusive staffing models to ensure that safety and belonging that we know is imperative to students doing well at school and feeling safe, and also just that consistent, authentic programming, expanding to those extracurriculars. There was an interest in funding for that transportation, for those after-school activities and such, and then recognition systems that we have to build that positive school culture throughout the school district.
While we know that no motion is required, we thank you for your time, and we would take any questions.
For the next meeting, are we going to have updates for theme three and four, do you think?
I believe that is the plan, yes.
Because I know the one for five is like right before the board meeting, so that'd be hard for you to get that data thrown in there, but it'd be nice to see three and four for the next one.
I believe that will be our plan, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to really everybody that has been part of the strategic planning process. I know it's a lot of added work and time on all of you, but I, as a board, I know we, I think, I'm speaking for everyone, when I say we feel I know we, I think, I'm speaking for everyone, when I say we feel very strongly and passionately about including our community in making these decisions because this is their schools. So, while I know that it, it does take more time to include more voices, I also feel that it's extremely valuable. So, thank you, thank you to everybody in this room that I know has been at all those meetings, and frankly, as a board member, I have enjoyed going to every one of them because I'm learning a lot at them. So, I enjoy that perspective of it, too. So, thank you. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next is Right, sorry, Right at School, Dr. DeKemper.
Good evening, Melville School District Board of Education. My name is Chad DeKemper. I am the Associate Superintendent of the Melville School District. Tonight, I will be presenting to you an opportunity to expand the before, after, and beyond school programming available to the families of pre-K elementary school students through a partnership with Right at School. Right at School is an established program that currently operates in multiple states. The first slide that I am presenting summarizes the goals and design of Right at School programming. We have been impressed by the intentionality, the structures, and engagement offered by the program. The next slide represents a continued variety of program offerings. Pre-K and K, Right Club, Junior, K-eight Right Club, Discovery Clubs, Winter and Spring Break Camps, Summer Camps. Our families will experience no decrease in offerings. Older students will be given a variety of programming options. These are some of those options possible. Right at School has an increasing presence in the St. Louis area. I had the opportunity to observe programming directly and speak with LEDEU officials in the LEDEU School District. During my observation, I observed students beginning a French lesson. One of the programming options provided by Right at School is the ability for a student to drop in for a day and to acquire a ten-day punch card. Families do not currently have this option. We believe this option will benefit our families in cases of emergency and unexpected situations. Programming pricing has also been shared with you, as has the twenty-six, twenty-seven summer school program pricing. So, at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you have about Right at School, and I would also like the Board of Education to consider making a motion to end our current agreement with YMCA. Additionally, I would like to ask the Board of Education to consider approving new agreement between Right at School and the Melville School District.
About the drop-in, is there going to be any limitations on that above and beyond the number of kids they would normally have that were already signed up, you know, for monthly?
No.
Okay. What kind of notice do you think they would need? Would it be day before?
In our meeting to them, they seemed to be very responsive in real time and have committed to be responsive in real time.
And would that forty-day, I'm sorry, the forty-dollar drop-in cover potentially both morning and afternoon?
Yes.
That's definitely flexibility that is not currently present, so that's a nice add-on for the program.
I have a question. Will the after-school programs be offered at all the schools currently offered right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Additionally, just to highlight, Right at School offers pre-K programming, which could be valuable in our extension of, our potential extension of full-day programming of early childhood throughout the district. We have heard that that was a limitation for some families as to why they were not able to participate in our full-day program.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Yeah, I think that it, you gave us a nice booklet on it all, and all of the information is on eboards, but I think it seems like it's the right move and will hopefully accommodate our families a little more than our current situation. So, thank you for researching this and doing it. So, with that being said, if I could get a motion to end our partnership with the YMCA as a provider of before and after-school programming at the end of this twenty-five, twenty-two-six school year?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Now, if I could please get a motion to enter into an agreement with Right at School to provide before and after-school programming beginning in the 2026, 2027 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you, Dr. DeKemper. All right. Moving on to action items by consent, A through R. Does anyone need to pull anything? If I could please get a motion to approve action items by consent, items A through R?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Open period for patron comments. No one has signed up, so if I could please get an authorization to move us into closed session?
Motion to enter a closed-session meeting for the purpose of reading minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute six-ten-point-zero-two-one subsections one through twenty-one and six-ten-point-zero-two-two subsections one through six. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, six-ten-point-zero-two-one-three, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, six-ten-point-zero-two-one-thirteen. Legal action causes of action or litigation, six-ten-point-zero-two-one-one. Records protected from disclosure by law, six-ten-point-zero-two-one-fourteen.
Anne?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy, yes? Jeff?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Serene?
Yes.
Okay. If I could please get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?